Only on sixty to entertain the motion to approve the prior minutes. All in favor? If I had opposed this, then we have an auditor's report.
Darrell Blair. My name is Darrell Blair and I'm here to present the audit of the Pennsylvania Independent School District for the year end June 30th, 2019. Y'all have copies of your report. If you would, turn it over to page number one. This is your independent auditor's report. We have audited the ten financial statements of the governmental activities, the business type activities, each major fund and aggregate remaining fund information of Pennsylvania Independent School District as of and for the year ending June 30th, 2019. Management's responsibility. Management is responsible for the preparation and fire presentation of these financial statements in accordance with the county principles generally accepted in United States of America. Auditor's responsibility. Our responsibility is to express opinion on these financial statements based on our audit. We conducted our audit in accordance with auditing standards generally accepted in United States of America and the standards applicable to financial audits containing government audit standards issued by the Controller General United States. Opinion. In our opinion, the financial statements referred to present fairly in all material respects the respective financial position of the governmental activities, the business type activities, each major fund and aggregate remaining fund information of Pennsylvania Independent School District as of June 30th, 2019. If you would turn over to page number three. This year is your management discussion analysis, the financial highlights. The first, the ending cash balance for district was three million seventeen thousand four hundred and four dollars in 2018 and one million two hundred and sixty-three thousand five hundred and forty-six dollars in 2019. This is a decrease of one million seven hundred and fifty-three thousand eight hundred and fifty-eight dollars. Much of this difference can be explained by the construction phase. Second, from 2019 to 2018, total general fund revenue decreased by 3.3 percent. Revenue from the state decreased by 0.77 percent and interest on invested funds increased by 195.4 percent. Third, among major funds, the general fund had 7.87 million in revenue and about 7.93 million in expenditures. Fifth down, the district paid 508,917 dollars in principal payments during the fact this year. If you guys would, turn over to page number seven. This year is your statement net position. It contains your governmental activities as long as your business type activities. Cash, cash equivalents for June 30th, 2019, one million one hundred and seventy-four thousand three hundred and ninety-five dollars. Inventory, nine thousand seven hundred and twenty-nine dollars. Interfund receivable, 128,716 dollars. Account receivable, taxes current, eighty-one thousand four hundred and four dollars. Account receivable in general, four thousand six hundred and eighty-four dollars. Intergovernmental indirect federal account receivable, 153,652 dollars. For an overall total current assets, one million 552,580 dollars. Then we have noncurrent assets, which is your capital assets and accumulated appreciation, sixteen million 555,025 dollars. For overall total assets, eighteen million 107,605 dollars. We had total deferred outflows of resources, 682,513 dollars. We have total current liabilities, 809,383 dollars, which is due within one year. We have total noncurrent liabilities, eleven million 635,474 dollars. For overall total liabilities, twelve million 444,857 dollars. Then we have total deferred inflows of resources, 377,697 dollars. Then we have ending net position, five million 967,564 dollars. If you guys would, turn over to page number nine. This here is your balance sheet, governmental funds. On this one, I'll just be going over the general fund because all your other funds is restricted for a specific purpose. We have cash, cash equivalents, eight hundred and six thousand thirty-eight dollars. Interfund receivable, 128,716 dollars. Taxes, current account receivable, eighty-one thousand four hundred and four dollars. Account receivable in general, four thousand 634 dollars. For total assets and resources, one million 20,792 dollars. Then we have accounts payable under liabilities, fifty-four thousand 654 dollars. And under fund balances, we have restricted for sick leave payable, eighty-eight thousand 673 dollars. Then we have unassigned fund balance, 877,465 dollars. And that's the magic number of what you've got to work with. For total fund balances, 966,138 dollars. Now if you would, turn over to page number 11. This year is your statement revenue expenditures and changes of fund balance for governmental funds for the year end June 30th, 2019. Again, I'll hit the general fund. Total revenues, seven million 867,808 dollars. Total expenditures, seven million 930,478 dollars. Which gives us a deficit of revenues over expenditures, 62,670 dollars. Then we transferred out to fund two, fifteen thousand 253 dollars. For overall net change and fund balance, 77,123 dollars. That's what you pretty much spent more than you took in the general fund. But if you look across the board, like your FSPK fund, you spent eighty-three thousand forty-three dollars more than you took in in that account. Construction fund, you spent one million 440,825 dollars more than you took in. And your other governmental funds, you spent fifty-four dollars more than you took in, which gives us a total deficit net change and fund balance, one million 601,845 dollars. But much of this deficit, again, is at construction. You've got a bond the year before, you didn't spend it, but you ended up spending it this year. But that being said, you did spend more than what you took in. If you remember back, as far as your federal and state funded, it did go down this year. So you have no idea how much the federal and state government's going to send you each year. So probably going forward, you kind of need to watch your expenditures because as I say, you never know what your funding is going to be. Any questions? And I went over this kind of fast. If you must have taken some questions when you get home, feel free to call me. I'm more than available to answer any of your questions at any time.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you very much, Darrell.
Thank you guys.
Are you going to audition for it? Thanks Darrell.
Reports.
Let's start with Mr. Ratliff.
I'm going to be like Darrell the auditor, I'm going to go fast. If you look in front of you, you've got this sheet here. The, uh, what you have there in front of you is a condensed version. I've just taken three pages here that I've condensed here out of about a, about a 55, 60-page PowerPoint presentation. You will have that PowerPoint presentation in your e-meeting. And I think Mr., I think you have, we have one for you there as well. So when you go through that, if you go through those test scores and that accountability system and have questions later, please feel free to email me or call me. Uh, but what you'll see there on the first page is the elementary school. Uh, our proficiency score, that is one of the indicators. At the elementary score, you had three indicators. You had proficiency, separate academic indicator and the growth score. Uh, you'll see there that our proficiency score at the elementary was the highest. Uh, we were ranked 170 out of 725. And it's broken down proficiency scores made up of your reading and your math index. And those indexes are calculated through novice, apprentice, proficient distinguished numbers. Uh, you'll see also there the, the separate academic indicator score. There's rankings there. The separate academic indicator that's made up of science, social studies and on-demand. So you see the, uh, the scores there, the index numbers for that. Our growth, because our scores have been high in the past, uh, whenever you have high scores, and this is across the board at the elementary school, middle school and the high school, whenever you have high scores, your growth score is not going to be, uh, as, as high as you would like to see it. So you see a ranking there. And essentially what all this calculates into is, is what everybody looks at, and that is, uh, the three star. The elementary is a three-star school and they were ranked 328 out of 725 elementary schools.
How many stars are there?
Four, four of them. Five, five. There are five stars that are the, the, uh, the most. And in the packet that I've given you, Joe, there is a, there's a breakdown on, uh, on page nine that will tell you the scores that qualify for a five-star, four-star, three-star and so on. Uh, at the middle school, it's the same deal, it's the same setup. You've got a proficiency score which is made up of reading and math. Their proficiency score is an 82.1. Their separate academic indicators and they were ranked 61 out of 320 schools. Their separate academic indicator was a 67.8 at the middle school. That's science, social studies and on-demand and you can see the rankings there. Once again, the growth score is down a little bit just because of our higher numbers in the past. Now, at the middle school, our, uh, our ranking was a three-star. And I will tell you that we missed a four-star by, uh, four tenths of a point.
And we, we think we should have got the four-star.
Yeah, well, it was a, it was a, we were a 65.5 and the cutoff was 65.9. Well, I'm, I was an English teacher, but in math, they taught you around that, that, that score up, you know? Uh, and so I felt like we should have been a four-star, but they said no. So the, the, uh, the middle school is ranked 109th out of 320 schools. And on the very last page, you will see the high school scores. The high school, their indicators were made up a little differently. Uh, you see that they had a proficiency score which was a 70 that ranked in 29th. Uh, and if you look there, our reading index was a 79.6. Um, these, and these reading and math scores, uh, they, they came from the ACT. Our reading score, we were ranked 14th in the state out of 228 schools. Uh, our separate academic indicator was an 82.7, it was a very high score. Statewide comparatively speaking, we were ranked fifth, uh, in the state with our separate academic indicator score. Science was high, they were ranked 10th. Uh, we were ranked, we were the 10th ranked highest high school in the state on our science score. And our on-demand, our on-demand score, we were ranked eighth in the state. So, and once again, these are all, this was all taken from the 11th grade. On-demand and science and the reading and math came from the 11th grade. So, uh, really good scores there. Our transition readiness score, Mr. Gibson and I have talked about this in the past. Last year, our transition readiness scores were 56, we had 56% of our kids who were deemed college or career ready. To be college-ready, pretty much what we offer, uh, the kids have to meet ACT benchmark. Or, uh, dual credit classes, but most of those kids from the dual credit classes are meeting the ACT benchmark. So it's, it's one of the same. This past year, we improved that 24% because more kids were deemed career-ready. We had more kids, uh, who were in a pathway who were able to take the, uh, the CTE end of program assessment. And I think 27 kids took that assessment, 24 kids passed it. And that ups your number. So, uh, total, we were, uh, we had 86, or 80% of our kids who were deemed college or career-ready. Our graduation rate is always high. Uh, our four-year, we were ranked 10th in the state on our graduation rate. Our four-year cohort was 100%, our five-year cohort was 98%. Um, and the 98% we did not have a dropout. The way that they calculate this, if you have a child in, in alternate assessment, they don't, uh, receive the type of degree or the type of diploma that, uh, the government expects them to, uh, even though these kids do exactly what they're supposed to do, um, it counts against us. But the overall score, the overall ranking, uh, we were a four-star at the high school. And if I'm not mistaken, we only missed a five-star by about two points.
There were only seven five-stars in the state.
Yeah, so, so we were really close to being a five-star there at the high school. And, uh, we were a top 20 high school. So, and I don't have the ACT score on there, um, our ACT, uh, we were ranked 27th in the state on our ACT score. And here just recently, uh, last week actually, our juniors, our junior class now, they took the mock ACT. And we discussed that as well, that's one of the higher scores on the initial mock ACT that we've seen in a while.
That's one since I've been.
Yeah, it's, uh, so it, it, it's a promising score and we hope to really improve that, that ranking on the ACT this coming year. So that's all that I have. There's a lot in this packet, there's a lot of, uh, a lot of educational jargon. If you have questions, please feel free to email us, call us and we'll answer them to the best of our ability.
I'll pass the good news there.
Yeah, okay, thank you.
Thanks Matt.
Yes, sir.
Oh, yes. Jamie, remember that you say thanks for supplies?
I'll follow Mr. Ratliff with some more good news. Um, you have an attendance charts and charts right there. It's comparing month one and month two. Uh, basically district-wide membership is at 3.51 from month one to month two. And going on to the next chart. Month two ADM district membership is at 14.97 from 1819. Both PES and PHS daily attendance average is up from 1819. And as far as what we're doing to promote attendance, we're going to continue the community partnerships for the perfect attendance drawing. Uh, Conley Tire was gracious to support, uh, month two perfect attendance. Beginning with month two, we're going to identify banner grades. We're going to start a competition between grade levels for the elementary, primary grades, upper grades, middle school and high school. We purchased banners, uh, banners were donated. And those will be given for that class to hold for the month that they had the highest attendance. Let's see. We are tossing around the idea of having a high attendance day every single month to make it more competitive and kind of just hopefully the kids will have fun with it and.
Didn't our high school place, uh, regional high attendance month?
We did not place, but we, they actually sent an email back because we were so close.
Okay.
We were so close.
How many placed?
How close to placing?
What's placed, what's placed me? I know it doesn't, the horse race, but what's.
First, first place, basically, they don't give second or third, does that?
Yeah, but we were very, very close and they actually emailed back to let us know that because they were so excited. It was a good thing. Um, I'll be at open house tomorrow, both at the elementary and the high school to promote parent portal through infinite campus. We've set up, Mr. Schmidt and I, an email account that parents can just email the information that will need to set up a parent portal that's posted on, um, infinite campus on page. Do you guys have any questions?
Good work. You know, you pretty well done yours. All right, principals, who wants to go first, Katie, or whoever, don't matter. Uh, welcome back, Ms. Austin, glad you're here.
A little bit tired from the last day.
A whole lot more stress.
A little less tired, a little more tired too. All right, um, well, first I want to brag on our high school with how great high school and middle school, how great they did on their testing at the end of the year. I think being 20th in the state is amazing. I'm so proud of students, the teachers, just all around. And I really think we're going to continue that trend for this next year. I'm going to set us a goal of 15th or 10th in the state. You know, every year we want to get better. Um, last year we started some programs and we actually piggybacked off those programs and continued to build this year. So I really think we're going to get better. Um, as Mr. Ratliff was mentioning, um, our juniors just took their mock ACT. We're also having the PSAT, um, another test to help students kind of gauge where they're at. Um, PS, PSAT will be this Wednesday. Um, and we're also looking at our math data for our seventh and eighth grade students that we hope to get to our teachers this week so that they can see which students, what areas of growth we need to work on. On the athletic side, October's kind of wrapping up a bunch of sports for us. Our two soccer teams finished, um, last week. They both had great seasons. We're very proud of how it ended with our boys and girls teams and their coaches. They had a great season and next week, our volleyball team will kick off their district tournament. They play at 6:30 next Tuesday at Johnson Central. They were the one seed, so we're very proud of that as well. And then our cross-country team, they have their regional meet coming up on the Saturday, the 26th. This is homecoming week, if you've been by the school. Um, it's all decorated for homecoming this week. We started off on Friday with our class competition. Each class gets a wing and we have judges that vote. And then this year, we're kicking it up a notch. And tonight, I'll be posting pictures of all the hallways and we're going to have a social media challenge. So there's two ways that the hallways could win, both by judging and by the class that has the most likes. I thought that would be a good way. These kids are so proud of their decorations, that way they can get it out there. Tomorrow night, we have open house. Uh, that starts at 4:30 for us, 4:30 to 6. We're ending at 6 because we have a volleyball game and we're really trying to encourage people to get to the gym. We've got two home volleyball games left. Um, we also have the book fair going on. Ms. Danbo has the library all set up for the high school. Usually that, some people put a book fair in the elementary and that's all they think about, but we've actually got one in the high school too. So we're encouraging parents, students to stop by during open house. Um, I've also got some old yearbooks that I'm going to try to set out during open house, uh, for purchase as well. If anyone wants to look. Um, let's see. Friday, we have our homecoming pep rally and something else that's new this year, we are starting a homecoming parade. So we're going to have our homecoming court candidates as well as several of our teams and clubs. They signed up with Ms. Kenner to be in our parade. That should be about 2 o'clock and it's going to come right down Second Street. So we're going to try to get elementary kids to come out and make it a community event. Then you have your homecoming game, um, Friday night, Betsy Lane. And that will be when we're announcing Queen and all the homecoming festivities with the dance on Saturday. Next week, October pretty busy, is red ribbon week. Ms. Bruner has been working on several activities for both of our schools. She's got a, uh, spirit week planned and a speaker is coming on Friday to kick off the event. And the last thing I want to do is I want to thank my administrative team, our students, our teachers. I've heard nothing but great things about the last six weeks. You know, I have one baby at home and I've got another baby down the street that I was worried about the whole time. And they were wonderful, Mr. Poe back there especially. I have to thank my assistant principal, he was amazing, Dr. McCarty and everyone. So that's all I've got for you all.
Good stuff, Ms. Austin, thank you.
Thank you.
Ms. Webb?
Good evening. I'm just piggybacking on some things that Ms. Austin shared. We are also having open house tomorrow night at the elementary. Ours goes from 4 until 5:30. And that allows our staff that has children or have children in other buildings to be able to visit in the other building. Thursday, our staff is having data analysis and we'll get more in-depth with our K-Prep scores. And I'll just tell you flat, our goal next year is to be a five-star elementary. And we can get there. Uh, looking at our data already, um, our novice numbers were very low. We had this among the lowest novice numbers in the state, which is what you want to see. We've got to tackle our apprentice numbers and drop those. Because we're very close to proficiency with a lot of kids, we've got to tackle that. Um, some things going on this past month. We wrapped up, uh, elementary football. We found out today that two of our students made all-conference, Anderson Lofer and Colton Short.
Congratulations.
And also last week, or actually the week before last now, during the Apple Day Festival, uh, the school competitions over at the courthouse, we had Gunner Gibson. He was the runner-up in spelling at the elementary level. And then we had Kendra Runyon, she was the runner-up in math at the elementary level. Um, we are involved in KVEC work, the activating catalytic transformation. We get $5,000 to tackle a problem at our school. We go tomorrow for our meeting on that, so we're excited to be a part of that work again this year. Uh, we've also been analyzing our math data and really identifying those kids that we want to work with. Ms. Leckie has signed on as our AmeriCorps worker and she's starting to work with those kids as well. And that's all I have. Thank you guys.
Thanks, Ms. Webb, thank you for that. Uh, for members, I'll be brief. We've completed 41 days of school and as you can tell, we've got a lot to celebrate. Um, I want to commend, uh, our teachers for the work that they're doing in the classroom. Well, I think Ms. Webb and Ms. Austin failed to mention is the dedication that they have. I want to point out a couple of things with our ACT scores, uh, with, uh, Mr. Davis who's in the room. I know he and Ms. Barton have been taking the lead on that and done a lot of work. And we talked about this, about this back in June. Uh, Mr. Shortridge, um, your AP scores are about second to none. Uh, so we're very excited about that. I know my son was in that class. Uh, and we, a funny story about Mr. Shortridge, we were driving to school one day and my son looked out and he said, and so when he was not driving, he said, "There's the goat." And I literally was looking for a goat. Uh, but, uh, that's what he refers to Mr. Shortridge as and, uh, we've got great teachers. Uh, I put our teachers up against anybody in the nation. I think our scores are indicative of that. I know our goal is to be a top five school. I think we're well on that pathway. Uh, and the work that we're doing with, uh, transition readiness is showing dividends. Uh, the idea last year was to increase our serve and learn program, uh, which is now Tiger time. Uh, it was also to increase our industry certifications, which last year we had the first time. Uh, our nurse assistance program, where we have 28, go through that and get certified?
Around, I was going to say, 25.
Okay, it was a large class. This year, we have over 42 new offerings, uh, both dual credit, AP classes and industry certification. Uh, that's a testament to the, uh, leadership of the building, trying to get those kids more services. Uh, anything from being a drone certified pilot to now we have five kids, I believe, taking electricity, uh, able to do those things. We're excited about that and, and as those scores become, uh, or those transition readiness scores come up, we expect all of our academic indicators to come up as well. Uh, so that's all I've got this month. Uh, Mr. Davis, Ms. Poe, or Mr. Poe and Ms. McClure, Shortridge, Ms. Baldwin, any of the teachers that are here, thank you for everything you do. Uh, we couldn't do this without you.
Is it Acelis?
Acelis.
Acelis?
Yes.
Are we, I mean, is it helping us too?
Yes, it is, yes, it is. We've got seven more AP classes with that. Uh, our electricity program in particular can use, uh, do that. Uh, that's how we're able to, we're able to do the class at school and then they go down to do work study in the, in the campus. We also found out that robotics is offered today. Uh, so we expect to grow probably by 15 to 20% more in offerings by next year hopefully.
Okay. Do you have any things from anybody else? Anybody want to speak? Yeah, well.
Mr. Chairman. In all honesty, compared to this board and our school district, I'm just one little member, but I'm opposed to letting this individual address the board again. There's an old adage, fool me once, shame on you, fool me twice, shame on me. And I really consider that he's fooled us both twice. The first time he addressed the board, I thought it was a lot of rambling. He made one point about some activities funds that occurred several years ago under a different superintendent, Mr. Porter, Superintendent Gibson jumped on that immediately. Uh, and I think they reconciled it according to him, second time. The second time he addressed us though, uh, he said something at the end that I found very offensive in that he told Mr. Gibson, that's our superintendent, that he did not belong here. And I have two reasons myself that indicate that I think he does belong here. One of them is factual and the other one is observational. The factual one is, he does belong here for no other reason. The fact that this board hires him, he is our employee. And he belongs here because of that. Now, I don't know if anybody's been observing, but, uh, we've done two annual evaluations on him. And he hasn't been just up either. He's been exemplary in every leadership category that we had to measure. And that doesn't come lightly from our past history. I think that message needs to be proclaimed to maybe three groups. Our current tiger family, that's our students, our teachers, all of them. Our staff administrators, volunteers, coaches, whatever. That, that's what we have evaluated him to be. It needs to go out to our community too. Our community is not just inside our very little school district. Our community is basically all the neighboring counties because we get a, a higher percentage of our students that don't live inside our school district. And we need to know, let them know that. Now, I said there was a couple of things. One, observable, and I think we've seen it here tonight, and I'll hit it in a minute. Our football team has a very appropriate motto, probably for every sports team we have. "We Not Need." And I think that's appropriate for our superintendent also. He's had the opportunity to be, uh, recognized locally as co-businessman of the year by our Chamber of Commerce. He's helped this board get state recognition. He has helped our school district become a, uh, one-of-twelve bright star out of one-hundred-and-seventy-three school districts. He has helped nationally our elementary school be a blue-ribbon school. He's gone to Washington, D.C. to address the state of education in Eastern Kentucky and what's been done. I listen to him on the radio at those little live spots sometimes on halftime between, uh, basketball and football games. I think we've got to touch out tonight. I do have something I would share from the Pansyl Herald, uh, later on, but in all of those things, I have never once heard him say, "Because I did," or "I did." It's always been about our students, about our teachers, about our staff, about our school, about our district. And I would like to quote the paper, which gives us an example of that observation. And this is from, uh, September twenty-fifth, the, uh, article concerning, uh, our star, our bright star award. Says Pansyl Independent School Superintendent David Gibson said, "The recognition was an incredible honor for the district. Despite the social-economic hurdles our students face each day, we still achieve." Gibson said, sorry. "Our teachers continue to prove they are some of the best teachers in the state. We are honored to be recognized for the incredible work our teachers do every day for our students." And that's the way I think he has appeared, and that's my observation. I do not think, uh, this gentleman followed your guidelines the lifetime according to our policy. They're only supposed to address items, action items on the agenda. He did not do that, and so I am opposed personally to allowing him to address the board again. I'm just one person.
Ken, it looks like that, what you said, is a moot point, because that's, that's not on our agenda anyway. We're recognizing anybody from the community today. Correct, Brett?
That's correct.
Awesome. I'll come back next month. But if I can just say one word. You can print this, and that way you all can't hide it, but it's coming out, and you want to question my loyalty? I was actually going to take it easy on you. You don't even know what loyalty is if you're swearing allegiance to him. So. Welcome to the shit show. Unless they need to remotely open the files, you'll wish it was. Just remember that. What next item on the agenda? We're up to action items. No personnel reports. We didn't have any personnel reports this month. Motion to approve monthly invoices. Any questions? I'll make a motion we approve our Big San area community action program. MOU for November first to two thousand and nineteen, October thirty-first to two thousand and twenty. There any questions on this? All in favor? Anybody opposed? Motion to approve use of school facility by Turning Point Dance. This is just, uh, one of the old dance dance programs that we have here.
They have insurance, correct?
Yeah.
I'll make a motion we approve the school facility for Turning Point Dance.
Second. All in favor? Anybody opposed to this? Motion to adjourn from regular session and move into executive session under authority of KRS six-one-point-eight-one-five et cetera.
Some moves.
Second.
All in favor? Thank you, all. Thank you.